Cesar Javier, of course, on behalf of my wife. She is my heroine, too. We speak again and again and again to declare what is good, heavy and nuclear, to honor and celebrate the images of our mothers. Sir Chair, are you listening? Thank you, sir. The females that brought forth life. Our heroines are worth protecting, respecting, loving forever. I don't say anything, any word, except, may we all try. You are the image of God.
Thank you. That does conclude your comments.
I have a lot of comments here. I did just want to congratulate District Eight and Environmental Health Coalition. I want to say thank you for the work that you're doing. It's especially important right now. Just a couple of days ago, the Trump administration's U.S. Environmental Protection Agency announced that it is terminating the environmental justice arm of the agency. In a statement of incredible amounts to incredible gaslighting, they said that some believe that so-called environmental justice is warranted to assist communities that have been left behind. This idea sounds good in theory and receives bipartisan support. In reality, quote-unquote, "environmental justice" has been used primarily as an excuse to fund left-wing activists instead of actually spending those dollars to directly remediate environmental issues for those communities. Utter nonsense. EHC for 40 years plus now has been working to do exactly that. And you've been doing that as a living embodiment of environmental justice. So I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you for the work that you're doing. The item that's in front of us today on the Consent Agenda is an exact example of what environmental justice looks like in action and why the investments from government are so important in environmental justice. So thank you for your work. Congratulations to District Eight for the benefits that will come from that. Thank you, Council President. All right. Thank you, Council President. I won't go on too long about this, but this morning's felt very normal and wonderful in many ways, and I appreciate that. And it's just kind of sitting with me that as we have what feels like a relatively normal city council meeting, our federal government is burning democracy down. We have the open defiance of court orders. We have the calling for impeachments of judges who issue orders that are not in direct alignment with the Trump administration's illegal activities. We have the elimination of the Office of Environmental Justice, the elimination of the agency that oversees homelessness response. And so I just, I say that today because it can feel like we're a long way from Washington, D.C. And at the same time, the actions of this administration in this moment are posing a direct threat to residents of San Diego, to the values that we uphold here as a city. And I hope that we can maintain the level of vigilance that we need to ensure that San Diego residents are not impacted in the way that the Trump administration is hoping to harm our residents.
The flaws and inadequacies of San Diego government are being exposed on a nearly daily basis. You are losing the confidence of the citizens. The budget deficit. Rather than reduce expanding spending, you look for ways to tax us. San Diego pays for trash collection from the general fund. The city's general fund receives about 18% of the property tax collected. Property values reached a record in 2024, nearly 6% increase from 2023. Property values have been increasing faster than general inflation. The city budget deficit is being caused by city spending increases of 35% in the last five years. Rain-in spending. Don't increase taxes and fees. You're raising the short-term rental licensing fees to cover unexpected cost overruns? Unfortunately, city cost overruns are the norm. You have done everything possible to diminish any influence of community planning groups, including ignoring them, proposing eliminating them, and charging them $1,000 for appeals. You have not defended our neighborhoods from Sacramento zoning abuses or weighed in or joined with other cities to push back. No. Rather, you add your own bonus ADU and complete community abuses. Thousands of housing bedrooms are being added each year with no parking. This is delusional and abusive planning. After baiting over 100 citizens to speak in favor of repealing bonus ADU program, you switched to a proposal to modify the program that carves out the majority of neighborhood zones that are being abused by developers using your programs. You've lost confidence, and every week more and more citizens are becoming aware of your incompetence as they see the results in their neighborhoods. And President LaCava, what is going on after two years for the Foothill Drive roundabout?
I am here today to formally request that our town council president, Mr. LaCava, place a model ordinance on the city council's next agenda, establishing a buffer zone of 1,000 feet for sensitive spaces, including schools, childcare centers, senior citizen centers, recreational spaces, and residential areas. The health and safety and quality of life for all San Diego residents must be the mayor and the city council's top priority. Wireless RF radiation is a fire risk, and it's also linked to a range of chronic and neurological diseases, including cancer, Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and diabetes. As council president, Mr. LaCava, you are in a unique position to bring permitting negotiations between the mayor, city staff, and big telecom companies into the open, where the public has an opportunity to participate in these important quality-of-life decisions. Mr. LaCava, as I previously asked you, why is our city considering the installation of two additional 30-foot cell towers and large equipment enclosure at Cliff Ridge Park right on the children's baseball field and just steps from Torrey Pines Elementary and the YMCA and its preschool? With an existing AT&amp;T tower already in place, we are still seeking answers as to why this location is deemed appropriate for even more infrastructure where children come to learn and play. The active AT&amp;T tower is only approximately 64 feet from the school property line. The FCC map shows 100% coverage at that park, raising the question, why is this expansion necessary? And how can we work together to keep our community safe? Please consider adding the ordinance to your next agenda, and in the meantime, stop these towers next to our children's school. I beg of you. Thank you to all the council members for their time. Thank you.
I'm here to speak about bonus ADU, and I am here to urge you to read every fine detail of these projects and permits. On 1441 Woodrow Ave, which is an RS-1-7, they're building 12 units. It's fake fallacy that they only do big units in RS-1-2. In these 12 units, the application obviously wasn't reviewed because the application says, is there a home over 45 years? And whoever filled it out said no. The home is built 1960, so 1960 to 125 is 60 years. It's over 45 years. The second thing is, is there existing home? And the applicant wrote, no. There's photos, and I believe you received an email of the photos. There's an existing home. So this means nobody is checking these applications.
With respect, is it too many, Sergeant?
Yes, Sergeant.
There's no judicial branch, and I'm trying to find out exactly who's in authority here. I seen the news today, and President Donald was talking about the JFK Papers, 8,000 Papers, with respects, Chief of Security and Activities Coordinator. Find out who they are, and you'll find out what the issue is. Now, check it out. The judicial branch isn't working. Donald, you said, two guys in the ring, it doesn't matter how much money you have. If the Constitution isn't being respected constantly, and this isn't going to judicial because the judicial's already showed that they're not functioning. The balance of the three, those other two, legislative and executive. What do I need to do to get somebody to respond right now? That's legal. If I did anything illegal, they'll be here. The Brown Act is why nobody's saying nothing. But yet, the 14th Amendment to United States Constitution is being overran by that Brown Act because there's people here sworn to the 14th and refuse it for the Brown Act. Is there anybody paying attention to what needs to be taken care of? Don't answer without work. If there's anything wrong, can work guided by the Constitution. I've been to the White House. Congress is constantly making wrong laws. The Constitution isn't being respected. I got documents saying that the judges are wrong. I'm in City Hall, axing who is overseeing the United States of America in this timeframe. Can you hear me? Yes or no, television audience? I'm trying to get in contact with somebody. Do I have to break the law? Is that violation of the 14th Amendment? Are you participating with democracy with ignorance or intelligence? What's the proof of your work and evidence?
November 7, 2022. Cesar Javier. Cesar Javier. Dear Cesar, thank you for reaching out to my office regarding your continued concerns over the air quality in your neighborhood. And the B. Pierri, next to your residence. You've reached out to the city's Code Enforcement Department and the county's Air Pollution Control District, who found no violations of either air quality standards or city code. I understand you are interested in pursuing policy changes and invite you to ask our director of policy, Brendan Dantino, who can always answer any question about the process of updating city codes. He can be contacted at 619-533-3982 And sincerely, Sean L. Rivera, Councilman Member, District 9.
Cesar Javier, thank you, Councilor Rivera. May I declare that we will be watchful of the destructive hands of politicians destroying our democracy. We will watch you, Councilor Rivera. You are the member of the governing body. The only problem is you are absentee. You know what this environmental justice is all about. You know what it's about air pollution. You know about ceramics spewing poison gas we breathe in our neighborhood. You know that, including the mayor, who is absentee. You are destroying democracy. We are victims since 1997 for my wife, 2012 for me, who came by providence in the residence. Thank God you showed me what is right. As a substitute teacher, I began my curiosity. What is this? I called the police, everybody here from the city, including Hasmar from the county. And the accountable employee, Elizabeth Brennan. Oh, we changed already the fuel. We have already revised the rule. Lie, because you do not have the city municipal code, Rule 11 or Rule 10. It is the law from the county and the Air Pollution Control District. It's a violation of land use and planning. It's a violation of environment and land use. Go to the law library, where we dig up all this information and data. We were late yesterday because we are going to declare you are lying. The city treasurer, oh, Mr. Javier, I'm sorry. We could only give to you the worksheet of the application. We cannot give to you the application of the owner because we need a, not warrant, but subpoena to get the information. Secret. Don't make it secret, Mr. Rivera.
Your time has concluded.
City Court Puente, Joyce Nata, District 3. People know you care when they feel better. I didn't feel better when the Department of Finance spoke last week at the Audit Committee, and here's why. I did not really prepare these comments because I want to speak from my heart. No dollar of the people's money is immaterial. And let me say this, I do understand accounting principles. Basically, best practices, the crow audit work, audit work in general, the ACFIR, and all of that. And I thank you. It's important, and it's appreciated. Yet, when you look at the people's money, it is never, ever immaterial. $600,000 is a lot of dollars, and this is the people's money, right down to the penny. So when you spoke at the Audit Committee meeting, I was saddened because even though I understood the protocol, and it felt right, and I appreciated it, I didn't feel good inside about the tone, how you were presenting it to the public. This was a terrible thing that happened, I think, with the $600,000 or more. And I just wanted to speak on that because it's so important how we non-verbally speak. The words are transformational, but they're also built with emotion and caring, which is really perhaps number one to the people besides listening. So please, please, we can do better. We must do better. This is the people's money.
Time has concluded.
Yes, if the housing, you know, situation wasn't a racket, then we'd really be providing homes for people. But instead, what's happening is, you know, developers are filling their pockets. They're not providing what needs to be provided for the people. And, you know, the homelessness is a racket, too. It's all about making money. It isn't really about solving the problem because if it was, things would get better. It wouldn't be that every year we need more and more and more and more housing because it's not even being created, and it's not even affordable. It's like we use these, you know, words that are fictitious, and it doesn't describe what's actually happening. And it's just really sad to see because this is like a predatory practice upon the people to take their money and pretend to really provide something that is going to be affordable, that they can actually get into. But instead, you know, we're not really making sure to engage with people that aren't going to, you know, if it is supposed to be affordable housing, it's deed restricted, that they're not raising the rents, kicking people out, you know, making it so that it's very difficult for people to just, you know, be able to live in a home. And it's sad because if it was really about helping people, the situation would get better every time. But instead, if we're only concentrating on, you know, filling somebody else's pockets, we're going to continue to see the suffering of people. People are going to continue to move out of the city and the county and the state because of, you know, the business that's going on. I mean, look at what's happened with the, you know, billions of dollars that was supposed to be going towards homelessness in the state is nowhere to be found. So I mean, the same thing is happening with this mayor and the city council, and that absolutely needs to change. We need to be doing what's best for the people, not what's best for, you know, whatever's going to make the most money.
Yes. It's sad because you guys almost like virtue signal, like what you're doing is really great and that you're helping a lot of people. But the reality is, is that, you know, tens of thousands of, like, thousands of people are on this waiting list to just get help. And, you know, the average wait time is like 15 years. And the sad thing is, is that just even in the county, it's only like 10% of, it's like, say, they're helping 11,000 people or something like that, and there's like 100,000, 11, or 100 and some odd thousand that are on this list. So it's like, you're never going to be able to even help all the people that need to be helped. I mean, imagine a child who is like three. By the time their family would get housing, they're going to be 18 because of how long it takes. But then we have people that come across the border illegally and are getting these resources right off the bat. And they're getting thousands of dollars a month to be able to go and live somewhere, which means that they've skipped the line. So I don't know what's going on with this program, but there are serious flaws when people can breach the border illegally and then get help, when people have to wait 15 years at least just to get any kind of help. So there is a problem there. And also, just like in the county of San Diego, you know, money has been spent from ARPA funds to aid and abet the illegal invasion that could have gone towards helping and giving more resources to the people that are in the program waiting to get help. But yet, we're just like, I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous. That's why you guys need to be more transparent. Like, how many people do you have on that list? How long have they been waiting? Are you giving, how many illegal aliens are you giving these resources to that could potentially go to somebody who has lived here and has been waiting in line? And, you know, like, how many people are on the list, and how many people are you serving? Well, those are going to be the transparent numbers that you need to show people. Until then, everything you guys say is propaganda. You're not doing what needs to be done, and that's a problem.
Your time has concluded.
Do we feel like there would be ways to even more narrowly tailor who we are serving so that we can even more confidently say that this person is on the cusp of homelessness? And as we're making decisions between a dollar for shelter or a dollar for prevention, quite literally, this dollar can be spent to prevent this person from becoming homeless or sheltering them in the future?
I think there's some work we can do on that. And in fact, we're in conversations with the Urban Institute right now about doing a study and an independent assessment identifying which populations this program works best for. So we can do some sort of front-end recommendations that we can bring back, I think, fairly quickly. You know, when you think about folks on fixed income that are elderly or experiencing disabilities, they have a harder time increasing their income. But they are going to be very vulnerable when they hit the streets. So if we have to target that, that certainly can keep them in their house for a fairly low amount. So I think all in, the average cost is around, what was it? What's the average cost, Casey, for a hip?
For rentals, this is $671.
Right, and all in for case management.
Around $1,400.
About $1,400. Compare that to sort of investment in shelter bed. There's a balance, right? We need both. It might be more cost-effective to really hit that fixed income and figure out how to keep that subsidy sustained while we try to find other options for them. Whereas looking at families that have the ability to earn income with a shorter term of subsidy and a lower amount and get them up and out faster. So yeah, that's one of the things we want to do with Urban Institute, is try to identify how we best tailor this program to meet different needs and be as cost-effective as we can.
Thank you. I think that'd be really helpful information as we move through the budget cycle, understanding on a dollar-per-dollar basis, how many people are we keeping out of shelter, off the streets, versus, you know, how many people we can keep in shelter, especially if we're talking about the expansion of shelter. And then to your, you know, that piece about vulnerability can't be factored out either, or at least I don't think it should. The impacts of someone hitting the streets who is extremely vulnerable, specifically seniors, you know, obviously needs to be taken into account because there's additional costs when that person becomes homeless, especially if it's unsheltered homelessness. The medical costs that they're likely going to have, and the myriad of additional costs that factor in. So the more data, the better on this front. I couldn't be more proud that the council invested in this program and has continued to fight for the investment in this program, these programs, and hope that we can be armed with the most information possible as we make difficult decisions in the months to come.
And we could also look at, you know, who moves through our shelter system fastest so that the folks that really don't and clog up the system, we prevent from coming in in the first place because they have higher need, which also means they clog up our shelter system so that we can focus our investment in shelter beds on those that we can turn over quickly and make sure that we continue to make as many shelter beds available as possible for those that we know we can move through the system and potentially increase some of the housing navigation that we've done in shelter to keep that resource moving so that we can really talk about how we best aim all of our funds, knowing that we need both, that we need both shelter and prevention.
Yeah, I mean, even as you're
So there's certainly some work we can do and bring back. Maybe probably, I would say by May? We could probably bring, like, before we get to a final budget conversation so that we understand that, you know, there's critical investments across the spectrum and who is best served by each.
That'd be super helpful. And even as you're saying that, I'm thinking about, you know, a household of three or four that can be kept housed for $671 on average. If those three or four people end up in the shelter system, their cost is multiplied out per bed, right? And we're starting to look at exponentially more costs for that one household to be sheltered rather than participating in the prevention program. So again, thank you for the work that you're doing. More information, the better, as we make these difficult decisions. Thank you, Council President.
Tell me about your commitment to ensuring that we get people who are currently on the streets, off the streets, and back on their feet.
So completely agree. We have to figure out how to do everything, right? Which is why we're really excited that Rachel's Catholic Charities program is going to go from serving 46 beds to serving approximately 200 and really pushing to how we bring more resources online, continuing to have conversations with BBSD. We hope to bring additional resources back on that. I know HSSD is continuing to look at sites for opportunities, and staff, I think, is touring, what is it, next week with HSSD? Two weeks. So we still are a full-court press across the spectrum of need, knowing that we haven't found that balance yet and that there's going to be really tough decisions in front of council. So we're very aware of that. We want to make sure that we are bringing every opportunity for each one of those: prevention, shelter, housing exits, and more housing programs to the council so the council can work through how we best meet those needs. So certainly, we will continue to bring opportunities forward for shelter just as we're bringing prevention.
The last I heard, and you can tell me if there are any updated numbers, 90% of the people who seek a shelter bed in the city of San Diego are turned away because we don't have a shelter bed available. Is that still the case?
Yes, Casey has those numbers. Just to be clear, it's not people so much as referrals because we can't identify between people. So some, one person might present many times. Still shows that there's a huge need out there, Casey, if you would.
Sure. We're at 12% annually right now.
So 88% of the time.
Filled, sorry. 12% are completed, and then 88% are left unfulfilled.
So 80, so, you know, a lot of people look at the folks who are living on the streets and assume that they don't want help. But the fact is that 88% of the time, when people seek a shelter bed in the city of San Diego, we say, no, you can't have one because we don't have one, and you have to stay on the streets. I find that completely unacceptable. I appreciate the opening of, or the expansion of Rachel's promise. I appreciate the work you're doing at Veterans Village. And we must find a way to increase our shelter capacity so that people who want a shelter bed can get a shelter bed. That is the least we can do. Thank you.
So what what I would have preferred is that we would be able to have a conversation about tens of thousands of dollars in bonuses that adequately deserved. Ms. Jones is worth every single penny the city pays because she's an excellent performance. But we're also ending the housing voucher program right now. We're not doing any new housing vouchers. We are covering increased costs for Section 8 because the federal government is no longer actually adequately compensating the city. I may be faced with requiring furloughs of city employees who make $40,000 to $45,000 a year. I don't know that to be true. I want it to be clear. We haven't seen the budget yet, but that is a discussion on the table. And so I just don't feel that it is the right time to be approving tens of thousands of dollars necessarily in bonuses when we don't see the full budget yet, coming from the federal government, coming from others. It's not to say they are not deserved, but I'm going to have a very hard time looking at my employees and telling them what we have to do with our budget. The city of LA has passed every tax increase they've asked them to do lately. It's a different situation, and so I just, I appreciate this very much. I just, I would prefer this to come with a full-budget discussion. I mean, compensating over $300,000 a year is very generous as it is, and so that's where I am. But since we're voting on it today, I wouldn't support it. Not to say I don't love Lisa. She's incredible, and I hope you stay. I just, I'm going to have to face a lot of people asking for compensation increases in the future. It's going to be very hard.
I understand that. And if I may, and honestly, I'm not going anywhere. This is where I want to be. Right, but if I may, the bonuses and the calls that were approved last Right, but if I may, the, the bonuses and the COLAs that were approved last July through August for last year was based on a very different federal environment than we're in today. There is no way, I think, any of us could have anticipated the federal environment. I just fall and trail very much behind because none of those apply to me, as they should not, right? The intention, my understanding around the activity that changed the ordinance was to create a more transparent process. I absolutely agree with that. Um, it, it falls in alignment with who I am. I am, I tried to be transparent, right? I tried to bring you the information you need, but, but I just wanted to say for the previous bonuses that were approved for staff and the COLAs that we agreed with SEIU, that took effect last year for this current fiscal year, not knowing the administration that we were going to have at a federal level. We understand that there is a potential that things will look different going forward, and it is my goal absolutely to protect our frontline staff who do all of that direct service and delivery, those, and I have made that commitment to SEIU already. I made that commitment to Crystal in January. We are focused on protecting our frontline staff who are doing that direct service. So, I just wanted to, to share that, just for the record, that, you know, I, we weren't making bonus decisions a week ago for staff. It was, it was last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate it. Again, thank you for all the work that everyone does, and I don't think anyone could have anticipated the swiftness of the destruction of the federal government going on right now. It's pretty horrific. Um, and there's actually a lot of families who can't keep food on their table right now because they were career federal employees until about three weeks ago when they were fired by Elon Musk. Um, so, I, it's just a different world we're living in, and I'm just being cautious. I just wish this had come with a full budget package. Again, I really applaud the performance review. I agree 100% with the performance review. You've gone above and beyond, um, but that's my comment. Thank you.
I, I want to thank Ms. Jones for all her efforts. In this particular scenario, um, I, I agree with Councilmember Von Wilbert. I, I have the most utmost appreciation for Ms. Jones and what she's been doing. It's an excellent job. Uh, she's undeniably worth every penny we pay her and more, uh, but given our current situation as a city, I feel compelled to not support the specific item before us, not in any way to her discredit, but given the fiscal reality we face. And notwithstanding this particular item, uh, as Councilmember Von Wilbert has pointed out, um, Ms. Jones has my full support in her role and in her ideas, in her vision, her ability to execute. Uh, with limited resources and headwinds that continue to build, Ms. Jones does far better than is to reasonably be expected. She is unreasonably good at what she is doing, and I'm very grateful. And San Diegans need to know that our city is better off because we have Lisa Jones as the president and CEO of the Housing Commission, uh, and as a partner to the city council and the housing authority, she is invaluable. Thank you, Council President.
Where would we be without the Housing Commission right now? I, I venture to say that probably a correct number would be that we have 10,000 to 15,000 more homeless on the street than we have today in our city. Now, I, I, I know that the county is stepping up. They realize now that, that, that we've got to get more aggressive and better at getting people housed. They realize, they're beginning to realize, and the city will be meeting with them, that, and has been meeting with them, that we need their help tremendously. We have only so much finite space. We are very built up. We are a city. There is a lot of room in the county that's potentially usable for us to be able to have more housing for people. And so, we're going to, going to be working together very hard to make that happen. The other thing I'd like to point out very quickly is, take, for example, Los Angeles, which is just up the road from us, in 2022, which is many years and many inflations ago, the salaries for, about $417,000 a year for the Housing Commission CEO, but the bonus was $176,000, and salary from other paid events was $240,000. That's almost a million dollars that the Los Angeles CEO got three years ago that now, if you count inflation, is probably 20% higher than that. Now, do we, we have probably the best CEO of this housing authority that's possible on this earth. Do we want to take the risk? I mean, God bless you, Lisa, you said you're going nowhere, but I say this compensation isn't even nearly enough for her at this point, and we should, we should appreciate that the budget for the housing authority is separate from the general fund, and we should go ahead and follow the, the lead of the Housing Authority Board for this time around and see what we can manage in the next coming year, uh, if not more. Possibly not more. Just a couple more seconds.
All right.
If possibly not more, uh, possibly even having to retract, depending what happens to our economy, which is so up in the air right now. I think that we have to realize this is a separate budget, it's a separate board, they have their own budget, they know what they're about, and they know how much they have. And I think we should follow their lead in this particular case, uh, for this particular time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council.
And I also would like to thank you, um, and your team and your board for all of your efforts with the floods, um, for you to come into a new position and at a time where we experienced such a disaster. And I'd like to note and, and make sure that we all remember that you, um, stood up your efforts, and I'm going to say on your own, on the Housing Commission's own. The city did not immediately play a part in that, and I don't want to, um, lose sight of that, and I think that, again, speaks to, um, why you accepted this position and what your vision is. And so, I just want to thank you for that and your efforts. Um, I would also like to state that, as I sit here today, I'd like to think that as we provide our comments, that we do speak from a place that is sincere. And we just had a very celebratory day where we celebrated Women of Distinction, where we are celebrating Women's Month, and as I look at the materials that were provided and the backup materials, I think moving forward with this increase is the right thing to do. And so, um, again, thank you for all of your efforts, all of your team's efforts, and I look forward to continuing to work with you because I think what you have heard from my colleagues, there's no shortage of work, and there's a lot more to do. And so, I think we all look forward to working with you. And again, thank you for, um, your efforts, your sincerity, and again, congratulations. And I will be supporting, um, the, uh, motion as stated. Thank you.
All right, thank you.